Good morning, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order here. It is 10:47. Member Renahan, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. To the very public, for which it stands, foundation of your God, freedom, liberty, and justice.
If you could please remain standing as we welcome Pastor David Elliott from the Lutheran Church of the Master in Carroll Stream to lead us in invocation this morning.
I want to give thanks to all of you who allowed the residents of DuPage to vote at any polling place this morning. Head to my congregation, which hosts a polling spot, and was able to walk out of my office and vote, so thank you. But I invite you to all, please join me in a word of prayer this morning, and let us pray. Blessed are you, O God, Author of life, for you are the source of all wisdom and understanding, counsel, and might. We give you thanks for this day, especially for the richness of good we give and receive. We ask you to bless these public servants of DuPage County. May they be beacons of your hope and peace to all whom they serve. Encourage them in their work and service, so that they may not grow weary but be emboldened to serve the most vulnerable. The challenges of our days are many and profound. Yet you, O God of love, shall surely be our guide. Reveal yourself to us in this day in the face of one we might not least expect, as you continue to break down the walls between your people. And on this election day too, let us participate in the wise decisions for our collective common life, serving our neighbors. We pray all this, in your holy name, to whom belongs all honor and glory, now and forever. Amen.
Mr. Pierce, can you please call the roll?
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Chavez. Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalsky.
Here.
Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Shorzy. Member Selman.
Here.
Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
All right, to begin our chairman's remarks this morning, we have a small change to our agenda, which is a very welcome addition. On Friday, when we published the agenda, we did not think our guests would be able to join us for our annual LGBTQ Pride proclamation. However, yesterday, we were able to work out the scheduling, and our guest was able to make it work. So with leave of the body, let us please welcome Naperville Pride Treasurer Christopher Lopez. Thank you for being here with us today. I'll also ask Member Greg Hartz, the sponsor today, and Napier Pride Board Member Don Desart, to please join me as I read the proclamation on half of the board. And then Chairman Cronin wished that I send his best wishes and regrets for not being able to join us today. Thanks, guys.
Whereas DuPage County has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ community, and the DuPage County Board is committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equality of all people in that community. And whereas DuPage County accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and beliefs, and recognizes we must continue to educate all to bring awareness of prejudice and discrimination. And whereas members of LGBTQ community are vitally important members of all fields and professions, providing an immeasurable impact to the economic, cultural, and civic successes of our county and country, and contributing to a stronger community. And whereas LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated every year during June to honor the 1969 Stonewall Riots in New York City, where members of the LGBTQ community gathered at Stonewall End to protest discriminatory laws and practices, which started a national movement. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas to this day, groups continue to advocate for the rights of the LGBTQ community, work to advance equitable treatment of LGBTQ community, and are valued members of the DuPage County community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board and members of the County Board, do hereby recognize June 22nd as LGBTQ Pride Month and invite all county residents to reflect on the ways we can live and work together with a commitment of mutual respect and understanding. This proclamation is dated this 28th day of June 2022 in Wheaton, Illinois. Please join me in a round of applause for all the good works done by our colleagues at Napier Pride.
Sure. Yeah. On behalf of our Executive Director, Margie Wolf, she asked me to speak this morning because she could not be here, but thankfully Christopher Lopez is here. Thank you. I am so proud of this group. I have been on the Board of Directors of Napier Pride as an ally since the spring of 2019. Napier Pride is not a social organization, although we have a lot of fun.
Yes, we do.
We are a service organization that brings education and vital resources to our community, and not just to the LGBTQ community. All of our events are all open to everyone, from our Health and Wellness, our Health and Resource Fair to Napier Pride Fest. We are open to everyone.
Right?
Okay, and I want to give a brief little commercial. Speaking of our Napier Pride Fest, mark your calendar for Saturday, September 10th, at Napier Settlement for our second annual Napier Pride Fest. Thank you. Okay, voters?
We're very proud of DuPage County, that they include us and everything. We think that we have a great future in this county, and we would like to promote that everybody needs to have inclusion. In our festival, we had kids from age 14 all the way up to senior citizens, and they were all welcome, and that's what we'd like, for everyone to be welcome, like DuPage welcomes us.
And I'll be brief. I'm very proud of this board for this being the third time, I believe, that we've done this proclamation. I want to thank our guests from Napier Pride. I was able to go to the event last year, and it was very well attended, and appreciate what you do for the community, and just thankful that this board's recognizing that love is love, so thank you.
On behalf of the chairman and the board, I would like to thank everyone who's supported the DuPage Care Center either through donations, golf, or joining the group for lunch and dinner at their recent golf outing held on June 23rd. Proceeds from the annual golf outing will go to support programs that maintain the high quality of life and services our residents enjoy at the care center. We're informed by the DuPage County Health Department that staff members there are taking appointments for some of our youngest residents who seek COVID vaccinations. According to the new federal health regulations, children as young as six months may now receive the COVID vaccine at the Health Department and from various healthcare providers throughout the county. As always, our Health Department has a wealth of information and leaks available on their website, dupagehealth.org. Before we get to the public comment portion of our agenda, I wanted to alert any of those here and those watching the meeting that regarding the zoning item concerning the cellphone tower variance requested at the southeast corner of Shaffner Road and County Farm Road, the applicant has withdrawn that item from consideration on the agenda, and that item will not be considered by the board at this meeting. That item number on the Development Committee Agenda was CDO 37-22, and that item was withdrawn from consideration, so no vote will be taken today. Last Thursday, on behalf of Chairman Cronin and the County Board, I was honored to accept the President's Award from UCP Sanglin of Greater Chicago. I'm sure you'll all agree that the honor is all ours. To see their hard work in our county improving lives is an award in and of itself. I want to thank Members Garcia and Chaplin for also being there. Lastly, Happy Primary Day. To all those who have bravely put their names on the ballot, we know the personal sacrifice and family sacrifice that is required. Polls are open, and I'm going to ask you, Mr. Pierce, till 7:00 today, right? So make sure you make your voice heard, and best wishes to all those on the ballot. Next up will be public comment. My understanding, we don't have anyone in person today, correct? So according to our County Board rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time provided for all remarks exceed 30 minutes. Mr. Blumenthal is going to read our online public comments, and when we hit 30 minutes, or you finish, we will stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Selman, as well as thank you, County Board members. I believe we have 15 comments today. The first being from Don Opal. Subject matter cellphone tower at Wheaton Sanitary District. I represent the homeowners of Murfield Estates subdivision in their opposition to the construction of 125-foot cellphone tower on the site of Wheaton Sanitary District. This tower would not be only unsightly an eyesore to our community, it would also decrease home values of our surrounding residential properties anywhere from 4% to 9%, according to a study by the National Association of Realtors. We strongly ask for your no vote on this issue. End of that comment. Next comment's from John Garza. Subject matter cellphone tower at Wheaton Sanitary District, case number zoning 2215 IL-0743 Shaffner Road. Residential zoning codes are meant to provide safety and stability to residents and property values, allowing variances, especially for private businesses, should not be taken lightly. The proposed variance for AT&amp;T and WSD to build a 10-story radio tower on property immediately adjacent to the Atton Park easement is a bad idea. This tower will have a negative impact of nearly 600 residents living within 100 yards of this tower. It will drive down property values and negatively affect the local environment. This 10-story tower will easily seen 360 degrees and will stand well above any natural and natural structures, will not go unseen. It will reside in a designated flood zone and impact local plant and wildlife. Not enough thought has been put into the impact to residents and the environment. Only residents within 300 feet were notified of this variance request. AT&amp;T and WSD provide no strong rationale for adding yet another tower in close proximity to other existing much shorter towers. In fact, many other private businesses and public orgs decline the proposition of the tower on their property for the reasons stated above. AT&amp;T and WSD are simply trying to make money at the burden of surrounding residents. We have invested much to keep our area a jewel of Wheaton, and we are prepared to fight to keep it that way. My ask is that you support us in the fight by reaffirming the zoning board's no recommendation by voting no to this request. Thank you. End of that public comment. Next is Gerald Gentile. Subject matter lawsuit Gentile versus County of DuPage. Please, members of the board and all the citizens of DuPage County, take the time to review the case Gentile versus County of DuPage. Suffice to say, power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. The county's arrogance and lack of civility during this pandemic will ultimately bite them. End of that public comment. Next is from Mary Helvey. Subject matter cell tower at Wheaton Sanitary District. I'm opposed to the construction of a cell tower at the Wheaton Sanitary District. My concerns are that this is very close to residential neighborhoods, and it is an area that floods. End of that public comment. Next public comment's from Vladimir Krazov. Apologize if I got the name wrong, or pronunciation wrong. Subject matter cellphone tower at Wheaton Sanitary District, case number zoning 2215 IL-0743 Shaffner Road. We love our Streams community, that's why we chose to move to Wheaton, not only for its wonderful neighborhoods and great schools, but for the safety and comfort of this conservative suburb. I am concerned for the safety and the visual appeal of having an industrial-grade 125-foot tower right in our backyard. This is a residential area with parks and bike paths. It would absolutely devastate our families. End of that public comment. Next comment's from Cheryl Strum. Subject matter cell tower at Wheaton Sanitary District, case number zoning 2215 IL-0743 Shaffner. I object to the cellphone tower being placed on the Wheaton sanitary grounds. This is too close to our homes, and we don't know what effects the tower could have on health. This will also affect the property values of our homes and be an eyesore. I also understand these could be a continuous buzzing, creating hearing issues. End of that public comment. Next comment's from Elizabeth A. Webb. Subject matter cellphone tower, Wheaton Sanitary District location. I strongly oppose the proposal of 125-foot cell tower in eastern Zerron of the Wheaton Sanitary District property. Most especially, I oppose the location, as it will definitely affect my property value. Streamed Garden Villas will be an awful eyesore, and currently, no one can with certainty provide health and welfare information. Please accept my no to this proposal. End of that public comment. Next is Elizabeth Webb. Again, cellphone tower, Wheaton Sanitary District, location being subject matter, and it is the exact same public comment. Next being from Susan White Depace. Subject matter cellphone tower, Wheaton Sanitary District, case number zoning 2215 IL-743 Shaffner Road. I am unable to attend the upcoming County Board meeting where the cell tower at Wheaton Sanitary District, case number zoning 2215 IL-0743 Shaffner Road, will be discussed. I therefore wanted to state in writing that I fully support the recent unanimous vote of the County Development Committee to reject the proposal to construct 125-foot cell tower at the Wheaton Sanitary Site. Although I understand the safety need for such a tower, it is totally inappropriate to build something like this in a residential area. The city of Wheaton and the county of DuPage must protect its citizens and property values and find a more appropriate site for the tower. End of that public comment. Next is from David Boldner with the Streams 3 of Condamani. Subject matter petition zoning 2215 Wheaton Sanitary District petition for cell tower. This is a true story. Several years ago, I lived in a Warrenville apartment adjacent to the water tower located near intersection of Batavia Road and Route 59. When I moved into the apartment, there were no antennas for wireless communication in place on the water tower. One day, I came home and found my roommate had wrapped his cranium in aluminum foil. He told me that microwave antennas were being installed on the water tower. I looked out his bedroom window, and sure enough, he was telling the truth. He was incredibly upset, but I thought he was joking. He was in fact completely serious. He expresses fears that control beams were going to be beamed into his head. He was dead serious. He informed our entire apartment building about the impending mind control that would affect each and every one of us. Regardless of his mental health, he believed that the thoughts and voices were going to be beamed into his head. He endured a great deal of psychological trauma and anxiety. He eventually stopped wearing the tinfoil hat, but the damage was done. Scientific experiments of this nature have been tried, and it is plausible. As far as I know, the technology has not been used on the general public. Perhaps some unliking military personnel in the intersection of national security. This experience affects the quality of life detrimentally. Perhaps some of my current neighbors at the Streams 3 complex have the same concern. I do know of at least one neighbor with the same fears in the building next door to ours. To prevent this episode from happening in our complex, I believe that it is in the best interest of the County of DuPage to deny the petition by AT&amp;T. David J. Boldner. Next public comment's from David and Kathy Boldner, and Lyle. Subject matters zoning 2215 AT&amp;T petition for cellphone tower. Have you ever noticed trees that are in close proximity to power lines? The branches grow twisted and deform. This is the result of electromagnetic field distorting the normal growth pattern of trees. Now let us take a look at 5G. The quote is from Professor Trevor Marshall, Director of the Anti-Immunity Research Foundation in California. The new 5G wireless technology involves millimeter waves extremely high frequencies producing photons of much greater energy than even 4G and Wi-Fi, allowing this technology to be used without proving its safety is reckless and extreme. As millimeter waves are known to have profound effects on all parts of the human body, hundreds of doctors and scientists across the world have highlighted how wireless radiation is linked with cancer, brain, and immune system malfunctions, and harm to unborn children. The enforced introduction of 5G is being dictated to prevent local opposition from blocking the carriers' plans. Law and regulations are being imposed to stop local communities refusing to accept it. AT&amp;T gets what AT&amp;T wants, not in my backyard. Why do you want to erect this cell tower? 5G is an inferior delivery system. This is by the admission of AT&amp;T representative who said our signal won't carry as far as 4G. Why are they pushing an inferior technology? This thought occurred to me as I was changing a flickering fluorescent light bulb in my home. How do neon fluorescent bulbs produce light? The illumination is produced by exciting a gas with electricity. The generator will be producing electricity in the proximity of a gas. Methane is a combustible gas. How is your food heated in radar range? The microwave's generated by the oven excites the molecules in the food, creating heat. Methane is a combustible gas, so microwaves excite molecules, in this case, molecules of methane. The potential for explosive combustion is possible, given the right conditions. This scenario is plausible. What about lightning? I'm sure the sanitary district is aware of the properties of methane. Precautions against lightning strikes must be in place. However, I'm not in favor of 120-foot lightning rod above a methane-producing waste facility 300 feet from my patio. I would prefer that the city of Wheaton and DuPage County does not become the precedent of a disaster that will end up on the 5 o'clock news. I urge the board to deny the petition by AT&amp;T to erect a cell tower in sanitary district. David J. Boldner. End of that public comment. Next public comment's from Marge Daddy. Subject matter cell tower at Wheaton Sanitary District, case number zoning 2215 IL-0743 Shaffner Road. I hope that the County Board supports the unanimous, no recommendation of this from the Development Committee's 621 vote. One impact, the cell tower will impact 598 homes in a tight radius from the Wheaton Sanitary District's eastern fence line, which is the proposed location. It is an eyesore and will decrease property values. We fear there will eventually be more than one tower at the AT&amp;T drawings. Page four shows space reserved for two future leased sites. Two notices. The notifications to affected residents were botched. We got none for the April 13 zoning hearing officer meeting as the wrong parcel number was used. Only about a dozen impacted homes received notice for this May 18 zoning hearing officer meeting out of the 85 that we were told were sent. Three alternate sites. We question whether due diligence was done on the site location as the only Marangeway in the high school were considered before settling on the WSD in a heavily residential area. Why not put it on the Fire Station 1 roof or enlarge the Attona Park Tower? End of that public comment. Next from Pamela Stein. Subject matter cell tower at Wheaton Sanitary District. The site chosen for the 125-foot cell tower is within close proximity to the homes in our subdivision, as well as other homes in the immediate area, including Streams townhouses and condos in Murfield Estates. This tower is also directly in view of the Wheaton Seek Temple property. We do not expect the sanitary district to lease out their land to other entities to construct unsightly towers that we, as homeowners, would have to view. If AT&amp;T plans to lease the cell tower to other cellphone companies, this would add additional unsightly attendance to the tower. The 125-foot tower will indeed be an eyesore and will reduce property values to a few hundred homeowners. This tower will be one of the tallest structures in Wheaton, what an eyesore in our backyards. Thank you for your time and consideration. End of that public comment. Next is from Susan Sarwak. Subject matter cellphone tower at Wheaton Sanitary District, case zoning 2215 IL-0743 Shaffner Road. Good morning, I'm ready to ask you to vote no to the cell tower placement at the Wheaton Sanitary District. The location of this cell tower is in the middle of many housing developments that house a variety of families in the Wheaton area. In addition, it borders a large park that is popular to a variety of weekly sporting events and family destination throughout the week. I am concerned that we do not know enough about the long-term affected cellphone towers, and with the proposed location, it concerns me that in such a populated area, it could possibly harm people and animal life in our area. Please consider my thoughts and concern and vote no at the placement of the cell tower. Thank you, Susan J. Sarwak. End of that public comment. The last public comment is from Gretchen Russer. Subject matter AT&amp;T 125-foot tower, 125-foot tower. Please do not approve of AT&amp;T tower proposed to be built on the sanitation property at the Attona Park easement. Homeowners, including myself, do not want it built there due to health problems, lower property values, environmental concerns. That is the end of public comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. Next up is our consent agenda. I seek a motion to approve of consent items below. All right, we've got a motion in a second, and then remember, we have to read these now. Yep, all right. DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, June 14, 2022. Payment of Claims, June 10, 22. Auto debit playlist. Payment of Claims, 61022 playlist. Wire Transfer, 61022 wire transfer. Payment of Claims, 61422 playlist. Wire Transfer, 61422 wire transfer. Payment of Claims, 61722 playlist. Consent item, County Clerk Report of Receipts and Disbursements, May 22. Consent item, County Recorder Monthly Revenue Statement, May 22. Consent item, Treasurer's Monthly Report of Investments and Deposits, May 22. Consent item, Change Orders to Various Contracts as Specified in the Attached Packet. All right, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin? Oh, I'm sorry. Member Zay? Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Member Akoff? Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart? Member Kuduski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? Member Pachalsky? Member Renahan? Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Shorzy?
Aye.
Member Selman?
Aye.
And Member Tornatori.
Thank you. Next up is our County Board Agenda, and Members Zay, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on CBR 26722, the appointment of Bill Lu to the DuPage County Historical Museum Foundation Board.
There's been a motion in a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yep, Member Desart?
Yeah, I just wanted to go on record as saying, we've two meetings in a row. We've really hit a home run. Bill Lu is a wonderful man, if you don't know him. He serves as Naperville's Chinese Community Outreach Chairman for over a decade. He's a wonderful gentleman, and I've known him personally for years, so I am so proud to have Bill on the Historical Museum Foundation Board. He's just a wonderful, wonderful man. That's all I have.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you. All right, motion in a second. Let's call the roll.
Members Zay?
Aye.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Member Akoff? Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart? Member Kuduski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? Member Pachalsky?
Aye.
Member Renahan? Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Shorzy? Member Selman?
Aye.
And Member Tornatori.
All right, thank you. That item passes. Next up is Finance. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to apologize for the late start of the County Board meeting. Finance went very long, but we had great discussions on important topics, our budget and our economic development relief program. So with that, I move approval of FIR 023822, Resolution Directing the County Development Committee to Develop an Adult Use Cannabis Permitting and Licensing Program Within Unincorporated DuPage County.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert?
Aye.
Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Member Akoff? Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart?
Aye.
Member Kuduski?
Aye.
Member LaPlante?
Aye.
Member Ozog?
Aye.
Member Pachalsky? Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Shorzy?
Aye.
Member Selman?
Aye.
Member Tornatori?
Aye.
And Member Zay.
Thank you. We move approval, I move approval of FIR 024822, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of Additional Funding for the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, WIA National Dislocated Worker Disaster Recovery Grant on the amount of $62,181.
Yes, Member Tornatori, that would mean you're voting no, or if you're okay with that, that's fine.
So I said.
Sorry, I did not hear Member Tornatori's response.
Sam, I can't see you. Sorry, so you were a no on the first item, and so if we vote on this with roll, you'll stay a no, is that okay with you? Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert?
Aye.
Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Member Ekoff? Aye. Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart? Aye. Member Kuduski?
Aye.
Member LaPlante?
Aye.
Member Ozog?
Aye.
Member Pachalsky?
Aye.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Shorzy?
Aye.
Member Salmon?
Aye.
And member Zay.
Motion carries?
Yes, thank you. I move approval of FIR 024922, Resolution Acceptance and of an extension of the time of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, WIA National Dislocated Worker Employment Recovery Grant for year 2020.
There's been requests for leave. Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 025722, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the PACE Ride DuPage Subsidy Agreement for the period of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 025822, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the Income Eligible Retro Program Grant in the amount of seven hundred seventy-eight thousand sixty-four dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR 025922, Resolution Appropriation, Additional Appropriation for the Illinois Department of Human Services Emergencies Solutions Grant, Intergovernmental Agreement, in the increase from three hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars to five hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 026122, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of Additional Funding and Contract Extension through September 30th, 2022, for Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program State Grant in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand?
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 026622, Resolution Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the DuPage Community Special Recreation Association Company, eleven hundred, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred fifteen dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 026922, Resolution Budget Transfers, 62822, Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 027022, Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with DuPage County Special Recreation Association for the Use of ARPA Funds in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred fifteen dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 0003922, Determining the Compensation of DuPage County Public Defenders.
Leave is granted.
And finally, I move approval of Change Order FIP 0401D21, Recommendation for the Approval of an Amendment to Resolution FIP 040121, for a change order amending the purchase order of, for a contract issued to Hart Inter-Civic for Voting Equipment Systems for the DuPage County Clerk Election Division to increase the contract amount in the amount of forty-three thousand six hundred eighteen dollars, resulting in amended contract not to exceed seven million four hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
All right, we have a request for discussion? Oh, request for, or has there been a request for leave? All right, leave is granted. And then you want to make comment before we move on to development?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to move to reconsider FIR 23822. I apologize to the board, I was writing something for Stormwater.
23822, which one is that?
It's cannabis.
Item A under Finance? Okay.
Oh.
So we have a motion. Motion in a second. Is there a debate on the motion to reconsider?
I think we got a vote to reconsider for.
Do you?
Well, I think you should have debate on the motion. Then you have debate on the other one. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a no vote on this. Again, I know we had a long discussion on this. My biggest issue is almost half of these sites are in District Six, which is a huge amount for our district, and I'm a no on this, so I apologize to the board for not bringing this, just missing it, honestly. So, again, I just think it's, I understand we've had a long discussion on this, but the amount of these in District Six are just almost half of these areas in the county itself.
Okay, so, Mr. McCarthy, we've seen, oh, sorry, member Desart, let's do, member Desart and Mr. Pierce.
Oh, thank you. I'm just wondering if we need to vote on the, we had a move to reconsider, a second to reconsider, do we need to?
We're in discussion first, and then we will vote on that.
On reconsidering?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Member Kuduski?
I'm voting on the motion that I second, just so Mr. Zay can change it.
What? I'm sorry.
I'm gonna vote yes on the motion to reconsider, I second, so that'll give
I see.
Board members Zay the opportunity to change his vote.
All right, so we have had a motion and a second. We have had discussion on the motion to reconsider. We are gonna call the roll on the motion to reconsider. Correct, Mr. McCarthy?
That's correct.
All right, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll on the motion to reconsider.
Member Zay?
Aye.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert?
Aye.
Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Member Ekoff?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart?
Aye.
Member Kuduski?
Aye.
Member LaPlante?
Aye.
Member Ozog?
Aye.
Member Pachalsky?
Aye.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Shorzy?
Aye.
Member Salmon?
Aye.
Member Tornatori?
All right, so now we are reconsidering item A. All right, so any discussion on item A? Oh, so yes, please do that first.
So yes, so I, I'm doing this for a second time. I move approval of FIR 023822, Resolution Directing the County Development Committee to Develop an Adult Use Cannabis Permitting and Licensing Program Within Unincorporated DuPage County.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item A. Is there any further discussion on item A before we vote? Last chance? All right, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll on item A.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert? Aye. Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Aye. Member Ekoff?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart? Aye. Member Kuduski? Aye. Member LaPlante?
Aye.
Member Ozog?
Aye.
Member Pachalsky? Aye. Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Shorzy? Aye. Member Salmon?
Aye.
Member Tornatori? Aye. And member Zay.
That motion carries, right? I just want to give you a second to do the math. Yeah.
Rock and roll.
Fourteen, I, four, nay, one absent, or, three, thirteen, four, and one, so item carries. And that completes all of your items for Finance, member Chaplin?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We move on to our next order of business, which is development, and member Tornatori, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of DCO 38-22, Ordinance Zoning 2223, Kinsinski.
Doctor.
Motion to approve a variation to allow a six-foot, one-hundred-percent closed privacy fence within the ten-foot corner yards set there.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert?
Aye.
Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Aye. Member Ekoff?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart? Aye. Member Kuduski?
Aye.
Member LaPlante?
Aye.
Member Ozog?
Aye.
Member Pachalsky?
Aye.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Shorzy?
Aye.
And member Salmon?
Aye.
All right, that completes the development agenda. Next up is economic development, with member Chavez, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank everyone today for their robust discussion about DCVB. I think we've gotten great feedback. I promise to make those, put a summary together of those, work with Beth, so that we can get back and have a successful resolution for July 12th. So thank you all. I move approval of EDR 05, or pardon me, 025022, Resolution for Acceptance and Appropriation of Additional Funding for the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Intergovernmental Agreement 21681006, Accounting Unit 2840, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert?
Aye.
Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Aye. Member Ekoff?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart?
Aye.
Member Kuduski?
Aye.
Member LaPlante?
Aye.
Member Ozog?
Aye.
Member Pachalsky?
Aye.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Tornatori?
Aye.
Member Zay?
Aye.
And member Chaplin?
Aye.
All right, motion carries?
Thank you. I would like to request a motion for EDR 025122, Resolution, this is Amendment to Resolution EDR 043521, Approval of Payments to Training Providers Through the Workforce Innovation of Opportunity Act, Intergovernmental Agreement Number 21681006, this is a three hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred dollar increase.
There's been requests for leave. Leave is granted. Thank you, member Chavez.
Thank you.
Next up is our Environmental Committee, and member Rutledge.
Thank you, member Salmon, sorry. Oh, brain fart there. As you know, yeah, I have COVID brain still. I'm gonna blame it on that for a while. Anyhow, as you might know, today's election day, and I want to thank everybody who stepped forward and put their name on a ballot anywhere. Our democracy does not work without people stepping forward, so I commend you for that. For those that are not successful today, I'd like for you to spread the word to your supporters that we will be recycling election signs, or graduation signs, or sports signs. They do not have to be political in nature, and that will happen right here on our county campus on Friday, July 8th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturday, July 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There'll be two dumpsters over by the 421 parking lot, and they're, we ask that you separate the stands from the signs into those two dumpsters. Thank you Lake Shore Recycling for giving us a very reduced rate on the dumpster rental to be able to keep these items out of our landfill. So I, this has, the flyer for this has gone out to the Environmental Committee, but I'll make sure that it goes out to the rest of the county board members, and if your precinct committee people, please put this out to your precincts, your township organizations. Let's keep these things out of the landfill. Thank you.
Be nice, member Zay. All right, thank you very much for your update, member Rutledge, and a great idea. Next up is our Health and Human Services Committee. We're so close, guys, we can do it. Member Renahan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we got a little punchy group here today.
Can imagine why.
So as far as update, I just wanted to, in case you didn't get to see the press release, the first awards through the $10 million that we gave out for, to help community services through the DuPage Community Transformation Partnership are out, $1 million in immediate intervention grants to sixteen non-for-profits in DuPage. So if you haven't had a chance to check out the website, because it really does kind of give you a flavor of what's being done. $280,000 in food insecurity, $268,000 in housing instability, and then, I mean, really outstanding mental health and substance abuse, $553,535 already going out the door. So big news, the transformation grants, the larger amounts are under consideration right now with the committee. So, and with that, I will move on HHR, HHSR 0260-22, Resolution Approval for Issuance of Payments by DuPage County to Energy Assistance Providers Through LIHEAP, $153,080 for cleaning services.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Shorzy?
Aye.
Member Salmon?
Aye.
Member Tornatori?
Aye.
Member Zay?
Aye.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Chavez?
Aye.
Member Covert?
Aye.
Member Desart?
Aye.
Member DeCiani? Aye. Member Ekoff?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Hart?
Aye.
Member Kuduski?
Aye.
Member LaPlante?
Aye.
Member Ozog?
Aye.
And member Pachalsky.
Motion carries. Member Renahan?
I move approval of HHSR 262-22, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of Internship Affiliation Program with the County of DuPage and Chamberlain University for Establishment of Learning Site for the DuPage Care Center.
All right, is there a request for leave? Leave is granted, thank you.
I move approval of HHSP 0195-22, Recommendation for Approval of County Contract to Benevate Inc., DBA Neighborly Software, to support the grant application and management processes for community development decisions, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, $45,000.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of HHSP 0196-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract to Warehouse Direct Inc. for Hands Open Personal Care Items for the Care Center, June 29th, 2022 through June 28th, 2024, $68,813.54. This is not to exceed contract.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of Change Order HHSP 109A-21, Amendment to Resolution HHSP 109-21, to Cisco Chicago for Primary Food Supplies and Chemicals for the Care Center Dining, JT K Administration Building, and the Campus Cafes, to extend the contract through November 30th, 2022, increasing the encumbrance $501,500.
All right, leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of Overnight Travel for the Finance Accountant to Attend the PY 2023 Energy Assistance Policy and Procedures Workshop for LIHEAP in Springfield, August 15th to 16th, 2022, $35.50.
Leave is granted. Thank you, member Renahan. Next up, Judicial and Public Safety, member Renahan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because we're not going to be having a JPS meeting on July 5th, I just wanted to let everyone know, especially our JPS members, yesterday I had a good conversation with my vice chair, Don Pachalsky, Chief Judge, State's Attorney, Under Sheriff Moore, Judge Telander, to discuss a really nice proposal that they'll be bringing forward to this board to reestablish work release program for the jail. So look forward to that at our next meeting. If you have any questions in between, feel free to reach out.[1367.51]
out. I move approval of JPS R 247-22, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation for the Illinois Family Violence Coordinating Council, PY 23, $39,000 for the court.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Runahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
And Member Pachalsky.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. I move approval of JSP 194-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract to Rayo Heron Co. Inc. to Provide Firearms Ammunition for the Sheriff, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, not to exceed $150,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Runahan. Next up is our Legislative Committee, Member Desart.
Thank you so much, Shelby. The third to remind you that today is Illinois's primary election day. Polls open until 7:00 p.m. tonight. In the 102nd General Assembly, both Senate President Don Harmon and House Speaker Chris Welch are polling members of their respective Democratic caucuses to identify member availability for a special session. They're planning it for sometime between July 5th and July 15th. It's the special session will address the Supreme Court's decision regarding Dobbs versus Jackson, women's health, and the reversal of Roe v. Wade. Governor highlights, three bills remain pending on the Governor's desk. The new law HB 4434 expands the options of professional sports team license plates Illinoisans can choose from at the Secretary of State's office. The change adds the Chicago Fire. Fans of the Chicago Sky will be happy, and the Chicago Red Stars will join the list of options for license plates. Grants awarded, the Criminal Justice Information Authority awarded $45 million in restore, reinvest, and renew the R3 program grants. Grants are funded through adult-use cannabis sales. And the third thing on the Governor's desk is gubernatorial appointments. So, that is the, this week's legislative update. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Desart. Next up, Public Works, Member Ozog.
Thank you. Where are we? On the wrong page just a moment. Okay, thank you. I move for approval of FMP 019822, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Coney Incorporated to Provide Elevator and Escalator Maintenance for Repair Services, Modernization of Elevators, Parking 509 Parking Garage, Various Capital Improvements as Needed for County Facilities for Facilities Management, Period July 1st, 2022 through December 4th, 2026, for a total contract amount not to exceed $3,424,333.48.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Pachalsky.
Aye.
Member Runahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
And Member LaPlante.
Motion carries. Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP 019922, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to PPG Architectural Finishes Incorporated to Furnish and Deliver Painting Supplies as Needed for County Facilities for Facilities Management, Period June 29th, 2022 through January 15th, 2024, for a contract total amount not to exceed $42,500.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP 0222, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Dear &amp; Company to Furnish and Deliver Two John Deere Gators for Facilities Management, Period November 30th, 2022, for a total contract amount not to exceed $53,910.28.
Leave is granted.
Okay, thank you. I move for approval of PWO 004022, An Ordnance Establishing the Dupage County Water Connection Assistance Program.
Second.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Okay, and finally, I move for approval of a change order PWCO 007A20, Amendment to Resolution PWP 007020, issued to Stewart Spreading due to a fuel surcharge based on the rising cost of diesel fuel cost for Public Works to increase the contract amount, contract in the amount of $111,830, taking the original contract amount of $1,349,800, and resulting in amended contract total amount not to exceed $1,460,883, an increase of 8.23%.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog.
Thank you.
Next up is Stormwater and Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For committee report, today, these five items is the start of our municipal partnership on our ARPA projects. So, with that, I move to discharge the committee.
We have a motion and a second. Can I all in favor of that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on SMR 25222, Recommendation Intergovernmental Agreement with Dupage County and the City of Elmhurst, the amount $200,000 ARPA item.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalsky.
Aye.
Member Runahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
And Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Motion carries. Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on SMR 25322, Intergovernmental Agreement between Dupage County and the Village of Lyle, Village Center North Storm Sewer Project, amount of $500,000.
Leave is granted. Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on SMR 25422, Intergovernmental Agreement between Dupage County and the Village of Lyle, Rolling Drive and Lyle Junior High Stormwater Drainage Projects, $93,620.
Leave is granted. Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on SMR 25522, Intergovernmental Agreement with Dupage County and the Village of Downers Grove, Wisconsin East of Belmont Drainage Project, 38194.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on SMR 25622, Intergovernmental Agreement with the Village of Downers Grove and Dupage County for the Otis Grant Florence Drainage Project, amount of $251,000 and, sorry, $251,540.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up, Transportation, and Member Don Pachalsky, please.
Good morning, Chairman. I would move to approve DTR 0263-22, An Awarding Resolution to H&amp;H Electric Company for LED Traffic Signal Head Replacement at Various Locations Within Dupage County for an estimated county cost of $298,659.91.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Pachalsky.
Aye.
Member Runahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.